I'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on this Tuesday, March the 21st, 2023, and welcome everyone that's here. We have all the council members present and we have a lot of our staff that has joined us also. So, so we'll start out with our first item on our work session and it's the Pipe Plant Park Update.
Okay, we brought this to you a few weeks ago. It was, you know, well, we've brought it to you a couple of times just to get feedback on when do we develop the park out of the Pipe Plant, what features and things that we want to have in there. So, we brought back a couple more ideas for you to consider and take a look at. So, we'll have Horrocks Engineering, Zach with Horrocks, will go over what we've talked about as staff and implemented some of the feedback that we received from the council last time. We have added a couple of things and we'll get your input and then hopefully we can get pretty close to decision making because we do need to start designing it so that we can have it constructed for next year. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Okay, I'm gonna actually start at the end of this packet, just to kind of recap where we've been with the concept. This was the first iteration that we worked on with the city. The couple elements that have stayed relatively consistent throughout the process is the location of the splash pad, the location of the playground, and the overall parking lot layout. The areas that have kind of morphed and changed, originally we had a fairly large skate park element, two footsall courts that were somewhat defined, but we were still working through actual layouts and products, and then a nine-square court. In the second iteration, we added some basketball courts. We talked about reducing the overall footprint of the skate park, potentially adding a pump track. Potentially adding a pump track, keeping the footsall courts the same. Again, the, the core area all remained the same, the parking lot relatively unchanged.
And I don't, I don't think the council ever saw the pump track in some of this. So, we saw this as staff and then we, he's gonna show us kind of where we ended up as staff. So, go ahead Zach.
So, to date, this is where we're at and I'll start with the overview. Sure, I keep losing connection there. Overview of the entire site to give you some context. The top corner is the, the core park area. We have future cemetery expansion. To the east, to the south, we've got our multi-use fields, which are also the, the regional storm facility. To the east of those, future public worksite, and there's some conceptual elements laid out there just showing everyone kind of what uses are intended there, but this layout is still, you know, unrefined and to be developed in the future. So, jumping into the park itself, this is where we're currently at. We've kept the pump track facility. One element that we look to explore further in design is the surfacing for that. Traditionally, pump tracks are dirt, but there also are some hard surface options that'll be lower maintenance. The skate park, still in the top right-hand corner, we have added a little bit more space to that. We've reduced the basketball court to one single court, but that will have multiple hoops and varying court layouts so it can be used for more than one game at a time. We've kept a nine-square facility, but moved it further away from the parking lot and buffered it so that it's got some space between the parking and the facility itself. These footsall courts are the layout provided by the manufacturer. They ended up being slightly narrower than we originally planned, so we gained some space for gathering areas around the footsall courts. Again, the, the playground and the splash pad have remained unchanged. That space and layout is as we originally planned it. We have started with some initial concepts on the layout of the splash pad itself. That area has always been kind of a placeholder, but we do have some information regarding the Viking ship feature that's been planned and have come up with a rough layout for, you know, direction of water movement, a couple of the actual splash pad features within that area, but this is still just conceptual right now. We're starting to work through the design with the, the provider of some of this equipment and the water engineer for the underground plumbing itself. So, that's kind of an overview on where we've gotten to at this point with staff. I don't know if we want to go through questions or Scott, if you had some areas you wanted to focus on?
Yeah, if you want to pull up that, go back to that there.
Overview or the zoomed in?
Well, no, that's just the zoomed in part of the.
Okay.
So, this, I think last time we met, we had this whole area was gonna be a skate park and we did not have a basketball court. And so, as staff, we said, let's get it, and the council said that you were okay that we extended the parking and pushed it more into our future cemetery space. So, we pushed that over, which made room for the basketball court. And the pump track's just a new idea. If you're not familiar with pump tracks, it's, you can bring your mountain bike or bike or whatever. And the way it's set up is technically you should be able to do the whole thing without having to pedal. You just kind of pump it away, I guess, and you can do that. So, that was the suggestion. So, the concept being is that this is a different age group and a different, maybe not necessarily different age group, but a different group of kids. It's gonna be different than the kids that play skateboard and maybe different than the kids that play basketball, which could be different than the kids that play footsall. And so, we're kind of broadening the appeal of the park. The splash pad's gonna be fairly universal and playground, even though, you know, this is gonna cater more to the younger kids. I'm sure once kids get up to 15, 16 years old, maybe that, they'll, they'll still be messing around over there, maybe more than we like. But that'll still be something that will be happening in that sense. So, what we're looking for tonight is some feedback. We do have, still have two footsall courts in here. I'm not sure if we need to have two. If we have two, then we can program it. We can run leagues and things like that. We could maybe program it and run leagues with one court. It'd be easier with two, but I don't know if we need to. I mean, in my mind, this is my opinion. Okay? Do we need two or would one suffice this? Or, in my mind, we build one now and then maybe we just leave this space available so that if we ever feel we need to add one, then we can turn around and add one on the back end, but not necessarily. So, one court, but we will have hoops where you can go this way and this way. So, you could have two games going, but it would be kind of, but there would also be a way to go this way. The full, kind of like how our rec center is. If you've been in our rec center with the way the basketball courts are set up. So, you could run two separate games, just kind of short court-wise, or you could run one big game long-wise. We, our opinion is, is two courts would be too much. I don't know if we would necessarily have enough play to justify two courts. So, that's what we're recommending. So, I'd like some feedback on the pump track. I'd like some feedback on the footsall courts, on what we think they're, skate park, is that good enough? Do you want it smaller, bigger? Are we okay with basketball? Nine-square, I think if you're okay with nine-square, that would be a little bit more of a permanent structure. So.
I, I need to be educated on the pump track. I, this is not in my, my realm. I can talk to you for, for all day long, but, and basketball. But I just need to be educated on that. When you said dirt, that, my very first thing was, first of all, maintenance and also coming into the water park. So.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we had that very discussion. So, this is a little bit more of a hard clay so that if it rains or something, then you won't have a ton of mud, the way that these things are built, but we would probably lean towards doing a concrete deal as opposed to dirt.
A concrete pump track?
Or the pump track.
Is there, is there any place around here that has that?
I know Eagle Mountain has one. They're down in St. George, the ones that Zach was showing us.
The concrete ones are?
No, the dirt ones. Are you familiar with any concrete ones?
I'm not familiar with, with any of them locally that are, that are concrete. A hybrid material between that, that one of our suppliers brought up the other day, it's called flexi-pave. It's actually a porous pavement material. So, it's kind of, it's a little softer than pouring concrete. It, the drainage is a little easier than if you had concrete, but it is less maintenance than dirt. So, but we can definitely pull up some or get some precedent images of the other ones. I know it's, it's done frequently, but dirt is just more common because it's a little cheaper upfront cost.
But longer in the upkeep?
Yeah.
I would, I would be interested in getting more information about that.
Okay, so maybe some videos of pump tracks and things like that, show you guys what they are?
That, that's a lot of space. I mean, that's a lot of area. I would say not concrete, but not dirt.
What do you think about the hybrid material that he was suggesting?
It looks, looks like.
I don't want dirt.
Yeah.
I don't want washawayable dirt, but, but, you know, something that is.
Scott, it looks like, yeah, it looks like Highland has a dirt one. Draper, a dirt one, and then West South Jordan has that hybrid stuff.
Yeah, that, that's my only concern is having a, I mean, it's one thing where it's kind of in the foothills, but having it close to, that it could clog the splash pad and get into the other courts. I don't know if that makes sense to have that.
I mean, are you talking about the dirt or are you talking about just the pump track in general?
No, if it was a harder material that's not gonna wash into those other areas, but I think normally when I've seen the pump tracks, they've been in the mountains, like they've been in the foothills.
Yeah, they've been, they're more of a.
So, it's hard for me to envision, so I'd probably have to see it, what it would be like at a park.
So, here's an image, a good image of a dirt pump track.
I, that looks fun. I would want to do that. I think it looks really fun.
But this is the hybrid?
No.
This is, this one's all dirt, yeah.
When you say dirt, it's not really dirt. It's, it's a.
It's like a hard clay?
Hard, hard. It's what, it's what Eric usually gets into in the hardpan.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a.
Go, go hardpan.
Yeah.
So, it would, it would look similar to this?
Yeah, ours has, so the natural grade of our site, it, we're higher on the east, lower on the west. So, the idea with our layout is, is you would start here on the east side and there would be a general downhill grade as you went through this all the way down to the bottom. And then, when you got to this point, you would have a little bit of a pedal back up to the top, but generally.
But the idea is you wouldn't have to pedal, right, through the whole thing?
Yep.
You, you get your momentum starting, but after that, you're just.
I, I would look at, Daybreak has one. It's that hybrid stuff. I'd look at that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Concept of pump track, though. You guys are okay with the concept of having that there?
I, it looks fun. I think people would use it.
I am, I am, I want to keep in mind the maintenance costs, long, long-term for this whole thing.
I guess our hybrid would be cheaper than dirt. Do we have an idea?
Probably. When, when you talk dirt for these, you have to import a very specific type of dirt. If we're doing the hybrid material, all we need is something that's a suitable base for the, you know, the flexi-pave on top. So, it's probably.
Well, then, and life expectancy for that paved stuff, like, you know, when does that need to be?
The brochure that I saw the other day that said even under high use, 10 years is a pretty conservative estimate before you need to do any kind of resurfacing.
Okay.
And other than that, it's just cleaning it. So.
And then the skate park would be concrete?
Yeah, it'd be a standard skate park in that sense. So, would not bowls per se? This would be more ramps and jumps?
Would, would there be any bowls?
We talked about not having them.
Yeah, originally when we had the skate park extending all the way to the west, there was a little bit of a grade change that we talked about having a bowl just to accommodate that grade change, but with it isolated to this kind of northeast corner, it makes more sense to have everything at grade or raised features. So, more of a skate plaza.
And on the footsall, I think that would be a, a programming question. If, if we can program it better and easier with two than do two.
It would be better and easier with two than one. I don't know if one's, I mean, let's say we were to run a league on Tuesday nights and then from six o'clock to 10 o'clock, we'd be running games on there. There wouldn't be a public use aspect of that.
So, are, are, are these got fences or walls? Okay. Because when you take a, when you take a shot, it's like that would be 15 minutes of going to get your, chasing your ball?
Yeah, chasing the ball. No, they're, they have, they have walls.
Okay. And then the basketball would just be pickup games?
And they would have lights too. They would, they would be lit. Sorry, what was that about basketball?
Basketball's just pickup?
Yes, we wouldn't program that.
Okay.
So, the, the, I, I don't know if the Viking ship, that might be new concept. That's, that was at the request of our donor, the Cook Family Foundation. Working with them, they like the idea of having a Viking ship as the main feature.
That's cool.
Initially, it was gonna be kind of a Battle Creek Falls thing and I think, and once they showed us this, everybody in the room's like, I think that looks better than the Battle Creek Falls. So, you know, there will be other features besides that, but that will be kind of the main thing and they have some great ideas on, some of the spraying that will go on inside the ship and then also on the outside. And then the playground concept has been kind of set for a bit and I don't know that, I think some of you have seen the video that was initially done. We probably just need to send it back out to you because they have kind of an animation of what the playground's, the playground is gonna be amazing. I mean, when you talk to the playground guy, I mean, this is state-of-the-art type stuff. This will be unique to the state of Utah.
Excuse me. In the overall plan, the house was not in there, number 10?
Are we talking about 10?
Yeah.
Oh, ideally, we're gonna obtain that property.
Okay, so this is, the decision has not been made not to get it?
No, I mean, we've, we've talked to the property owner about an appraisal and starting the first part of getting that, but it's not a done deal and there's a chance that it couldn't happen. But as far as design of everything, we purposely said we're gonna design around it per se, but if we obtain it, I think this is the area where we were gonna have a, maybe a secondary, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, or we'd have a, a catch basin where as we were catching stormwater, we'd turn around and put that back into our secondary water system.
That's a pump house?
Yeah, so that would be the pump area.
Um, back up to the playground?
Yep.
And let's just talk parking for a second. So, do we feel like we have sufficient for the patrons of the park?
Yeah, when we did our original calculations, we laid this out as, you know, opening day scenario at the park and with some programming on, on the fields and we have enough stalls. There, you know, there is the, the possibility that you have a day that opening conditions at the park, plus you have, you know, a massive number of programs going on, on the fields where it could overload the parking proposed here. But anywhere that we've got parking, we've planned for it. We've got angled on-street parking up here at the top, angled on-street parking all the way at the bottom. There is some opportunities for parallel street parking along all the roads that we're working on.
Please.
And then the future public worksite, we've even discussed having a gravel parking area there that could act as overflow until that site is developed in the future. And then even when it is developed in the future, out front is typically visitor, employee parking and we don't see that overlapping with Saturday sports programs. So, that can become additional parking as well.
We'd have to be, we'd have to, we'd need to stagger our soccer start times. That's what some places do. Instead of starting everything at 9:00 a.m., all six fields, three fields at 9:00 and three at 9:30 type deal where we can help with that, that traffic flow. The parking, we feel pretty good about. If for some reason we're getting overwhelmed, we can continue to push that parking a little bit on the cemetery side of things. That will, we'll have space to move if we need to.
And kind of within that, the splash pad area, is there like pavilions, benches, tables for people to eat, things like that?
Yeah, can we zoom back in on that? Okay, so you see in between the splash pad and the playground, those are cabanas? Okay, so those will have a table in them and they'll be covered. And then we have the shade structure. There will likely be artificial grass there because we won't be able to maintain it, but that will be a shade structure where somebody brought their camp chairs. They could sit under that and have some shade. And then we'll have pavilions around the outside. Okay, and then four and 12, which one's the restroom?
12 is the restroom.
12 is the restroom. Four is gonna be a large pavilion there. So, if somebody wanted to rent that for a family event.
Any concessions?
No.
Is it fenced in anywhere, walking off from the skate park and pump?
What's that?
Is it pretty much open? Is there any fencing in here?
No.
It blocks it, or is it all just open?
No, it's burned. So, you can't see that. Is that right, Zach, what you?
So, from the skate park down to the playground, there's about a, a four to five-foot elevation drop there and this landscape area is burmed. Same thing as you go from the playground down to the footsall area, there's also a, a burmed landscape area. We did talk about the pump track being fenced so that in the event of a storm, they could close it if we do do the dirt. And then we would likely try and incorporate as many of the skate features around the perimeter to create a barrier, whether they're walls that have grind rails on them and try and create kind of some separation there.
You can see where the steps are by the footsall courts right here. And that shows you that, those would be steps going down.
Nine-square?
Nine-square's right there, yeah.
I know, but popular, is it popular anymore? Do a lot of people come out? Would we, would we rather put something else in there? Scott, are you the nine-square?
I can speak anecdotally. Every time I've seen a nine-square go up, I've seen 100 kids go line up to play. So, if we don't want to create, that, that one's fine. I mean, that was just something we thought. If we wanted to do that, we can do it. If not.
So, the, Greg Cook had mentioned an amphitheater. Is there any type of structure like that or not really? Are we not?
That was a concept we gave up a while. That was the $35 million park.
So, let's talk concessions for a minute.
Okay.
Do we want any, any place where people can buy a drink?
No.
No.
I wouldn't recommend it. Operationalizing that, I, I would love a concession. They're operationalizing that as a mess. I mean.
Contracted out?
Have a food truck come in.
Yeah.
All right, so then if, which was my next thing.
Hot machines, hot machines maybe.
Vending machines or something?
So, my next thing then is, let's make sure in that parking lot that we at least have some hookups for some food trucks.
Okay.
Can you give me a, the overview of the whole thing?
Yeah.
Why, oh, let me see if I can get this. You have this parking here. Why not put it all the way to there?
Because, I mean, we're just still trying to preserve a little space for, we think, Brent, based on what you're seeing right now, there's enough.
Yeah.
We could be wrong once we actually start using this, but I, in my mind, if we are short, then we could extend where it says number eight there. We could push parking over. We could add more angled parking if we need to. I don't know if we need to start with that.
Well, that'd be, put the rest of the way up. Eight would be parallel parking in, right?
There, I don't know if there would necessarily be, that, that street's not gonna be super wide. I don't know if there'd be any parking there. Are, are you talking about this mayor, right? Like, right along that?
Yes, up that street there.
Yeah, if there's enough room, people could parallel park there, but I'd, I mean, you're, I don't know, you're probably talking just a handful of stalls there.
Would take much to pull that curb in a little bit more.
Again, I, to me, that's something we could, that's something we could just put in later.
Even if it's for future cemetery use, I mean, at least you got some.
Memorial Day.
Yeah, you got splash pad and, and grandparents trying to find their kid's soccer game.
Do we know how many stalls we have? Do you have that written somewhere?
There is currently 368 as of the last count.
That's pretty good.
It's a pretty good amount of parking.
What we're gonna see is, we're gonna see people parking on these roads right here.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If people start parking there, then I think we take this section and we turn this into parking.
But are you saying that's 368 designated stalls? That doesn't include the parallel parking or it does include the parallel parking?
That includes the angled parking, but it doesn't include any parallel parking. Because that's where I'm gonna park.
Yeah.
Okay, Scott?
Yeah.
Can you zoom back into the nine-square?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna throw an idea out and you can rip it to shreds.
That's how we roll.
That's how we roll. What if you put just a small little ample theater in here?
It's not big enough for that.
Well, so, nine-square is from here to there?
Talking like a 40, 50-person ample theater here. I don't know.
No, we got that at the downtown park.
Okay, I told you to trash it.
But I'm trying to think of, if you wanted something else in that space, what, what would you want?
I mean, that, that could be turned parking if we wanted to. I mean, that could be, instead of the nine-square, we could put a.
Well, you could put another, put another pavilion in that corner right there. Put a pavilion there instead of that nine-square.
Concessions.
It could, wait, uh.
Yeah.
Back to my ample theater thing. This whole thing, I'm talking about this whole thing. So, we're talking the size of a basketball court as a little mini ample theater. I'm just throwing it out. That way, you kind of get best of both worlds of what he was looking for. You could have a little mini concerts in here or presentations, gathering place. You could even do what we even have at Downtown Park, have a pavilion that is a little sunken a little bit. I don't know. People sit on the grass.
What's the rest council think? I mean.
I feel like, I mean, you can have some concerts there. I mean, it's gonna be a gathering place. Why not have a place where you could do some presentations and concerts and.
Do we know what types of presentations we'd be doing there?
We could just buy a portable stage and do it on a soccer field in the evenings.
I mean, the, the library has programs they could take down there and do. I mean, I'm just thinking of.
So, Vineyard has a portable stage and they just, on their big soccer fields, they just set up that portable stage and.
And when you say portable, don't think portable.
No, it's not easy.
It's huge.
It's huge.
It's huge. Oh, no, it's, it's probably fine. No, it's probably, I'm not saying, it's, it's a huge stage for a huge venue.
But, so, but what I'm saying is on a soc, in, on those soccer fields, if you want, if we invested in a stage that can be set up, you could have anything you wanted. Yeah.
Dance competitions, et cetera. Huge. Dion's all over that.
I actually would like that instead of putting money into an amphitheater, putting into a stadium down.
So, just, just so you know, one, one thing we've, that we've kind of gathered around a little bit is doing a mini amphitheater out here right next to the library.
Okay.
So I've.
They could do some.
So maybe we can ask our parks director or rec director some ideas too, I mean, they are in that field.
Well, they sit in the same meetings that we.
Okay, so this, they're, are they okay with this?
I believe so. Our rec director's been here for two days.
I know, awesome.
This might be our first time to see this. Now, but Dion's been in all of our planning meetings since we've gone through this.
I know Dion likes to pump parks, so, other than that.
I like this, I think it's some, kinda something for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
That was our intent.
And some, some things that are kinda different, I like it. I don't know what I would change at this point.
Okay, we're gonna, the two footsall courts, we'll keep that.
Yep.
And nine-square, what do you want me to do?
I'm just not a nine-square guy.
It's paying me a hundred dollars in like metal to like make the whole thing, I mean, it's not that big of a deal.
It's, it's, it's not, unless there was some other thing we'd like.
It's not that big of an area to really put something on it.
I, in my opinion, if we wanna consider a small amphitheater, I'd rather do it over here.
I agree, yeah.
Well, I'd like to invest in a, in a nice stage, I like that, Diana.
I guess one thought, um, with the talk of, you know, stages in the soccer fields, we did put together some graphics to help illustrate this. But, the way that these detention ponds are set up, there are berms in between the fields and that gives you a lot of seating for people.
Looks like Panama. No, sorry, that's the, no, it's the canal.
Let's hope there's not that much water.
But, I mean, any of these.
You got a Viking ship.
Yeah. Any of those corners would give you almost a, an amphitheater type setting with berms on all sides and you could place a stage in the middle, so.
Future, future.
So, just a couple of things to keep in mind, for, as part of this project with the money that we have set aside, we're gonna do all this. But the actual basin, so this is an extension of the basin, but the initial gathering part of the basin's gonna be right here, we're not gonna build that just yet. Cause we still need this building here for storage. So until we get our Public Works building out here and reconfigure how we're gonna store stuff out here, this right now is just gonna stay intact. And so, we'll have the bigger part of the basin built, but we won't have this part. We'll have some of the infrastructure put in of the pipes that need to go in to get water to our basin. But this will not be a functional basin right off the bat when we're done, so we just wanna make sure that that's understood. That, there is a, a building there, an old building, and that's gonna stay there for the time being. Most everything else, this building's gonna stay here for the time being and pretty much everything else is gonna be taken out. So, we're hoping to start the demo, what did we say, early May, I think? Okay, so we're getting ready to start demoing and get the fence down and get the rest of the tree stumps out. So that they can start leveling, cause there's a lot of dirt that needs to be moved here to prepare for these berms. The design for the splash pad and the playground are underway. So that we're hoping to have all that stuff ready to go next spring slash summer, so.
Um, here's a question, water for the splash pad. Where's that coming from? How is that?
So, culinary water that will be used and it will be treated, so it'll have chlorine in it and it will be recycled. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, and, like, we have enough of that?
Enough water?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I mean culinary wise is generally not our issue with water, it's secondary water is our issue.
Okay.
It's non-consumptive.
Right. So, but with evaporation, we will be having to.
Yeah, you'll lose some as, as you cycle through that, but.
Okay.
That's not a concern for, in our minds, that's not a concern.
Okay.
And we're recycling, some, some just use it and send it right down to the sewer. That, that, water conservation wise, that's probably not a good idea, so the fact that we're recycling it is.
And that's all onsite, the recycling and the recirculating?
This building here is the recycle facility. So this will be a restroom, but it will also be the pump house where the recycling will take place here. And then all the, it will, put it out this way, then it'll bring it back in, treat it, pump it back out, bring it back in.
Okay.
And the other one's a pavilion?
Other one's gonna be a large pavilion.
Rented out?
Yeah, that we would rent out. And I think we talked about having dividers in there so that, you know, even though it's a large pavilion, some people might not have a group of one hundred. So there would be a way that maybe put some, a divider in there to kinda break it into two if we need to.
Okay.
Alright.
So are we looking good then? We can proceed, uh, cause we gotta turn these guys loose on design now that we have agreed on concept and so they can get going so we can.
We've been counsel, we're okay?
Start construction.
I've been in on these meetings, so this isn't new to me, so anyway, so.
Let's do it.
Okay, alright, thanks Zach.
Neil, are you gonna use the same court?
We'll now move on to our next item, six hundred west Center Street discussion. My public works director.
Next time I'm gonna ask to go first, cause following a twenty million dollar legacy park with a transportation issue is not as cool, so.
Except for we've all been at that traffic issue, so we're so excited about this, Neil, you go.
Yeah, um, so, you're familiar with six hundred west and Center Street is located in the center of the screen. We have a timeline to create a transportation master plan and then create an ultimate solution. And then we hope to apply for funding to MAG to assist or pay for the bulk of this improvement that we determine to be a, a solution here. This is a really unique intersection, you've got the proximity to State Street on a curve. And then you've also got a, an skewed rail line that comes through there. Rail lines and roads generally like to intersect at perpendicular shapes. It's, it's just got some challenges associated with it. So, we engaged with Horox engineers a, a little bit ago to move forward with some concepting. Created fourteen concepts that staff reviewed, we've hopefully kind of whittled it down to about four, but we'll show you all fourteen. Some of them are fifty million dollar plus solutions, some of them are not. We, we know that there's limited funding available on all accounts. So, Kevin's gonna run through those. But ultimately, at the end, we hope to get direction to, to move forward. Because, we can't do a full design, full concept, full modeling on all concepts where that just, we spin our wheels and spend a lot of money on that. There is even a concept of closing the whole road down and, and putting a cul-de-sac at the end of six west. Now, from a transportation only perspective, boy, would that makes the intersection work perfectly, no left turns, no right turns, wow. All of a sudden, Center Street moves freely, but that is a concept. When you look at some of the constraints that happen here. And this, the way that this rail ri, line comes through, when you start widening for a, a, a signalized intersection there at six west. You end up creating medians and, and then if you relocate the, the line to the middle of the road, all of a sudden you're bisecting. Where those on the corner and these businesses on the south side cannot access to the north. So, each path down this little decision matrix has pros and cons and we'll look at those and, and discuss those. So, I'll turn the time over to Kevin and, and he can plug in. And, uh, we'll walk down this little journey of trying to find a good solution for us. Which connection have you got?
Okay. Well, Mayor Council, thanks, I'm, I'm excited to be here, cause I live in Pleasant Grove and so it's kinda fun to actually do projects in Pleasant Grove. I drive here every day, so it, I think when they said, hey, who wants to tackle this problem, let's pick the local guy, right? Who wants to try and figure this out? Uh, yeah, hey, you live here, so you figure this out. No, so, again, I, I think Neil, the scope of this, uh, this analysis is really to look at, almost just kinda take the engineer out of me and just say, let's get creative, what can we do here to figure out what's going on? And then let's come up with what the best solution is for the city. And so, when, when you see some of these concepts, just remember this is, we're looking at the big picture right now. Looking at all options at this intersection and then obviously we really want your input and what we wanna move forward with. So, I'll walk through these pretty quick. And again, like Neil said, there were four that we can go into more detail about, but I'll start by going through all these pretty quick. So the first one was again, like Neil said, to just make a cul-de-sac and just say, we're not gonna have any access there. I know there's some important park we just talked about to the north, but there is a, there, but that is an option that we drew concept for, putting a cul-de-sac there.
Where would you divert, like where would traffic go, or are you just laughing?
Back where they came.
We'll send it down Eric's road, what street do you live on?
There you go.
That's the, that's the option, I mean it's.
Main street. Well, if you, if you had them go in front of the movie theater and then we can finish the road out to Thirteenth West, that's where those heading west would go. And then of course, there's a connection east out to Center Street that's more conducive and away from State Street. So, it's there, as a concept.
Okay, I'll see if my arrow works here.
I'm not saying no to anything, I'm, I'm open.
Alright, let's do this here. Alright, let me, for some reason it's not going to the next one, so I'll do. Okay, so the next one is to create a right and right out. So essentially eliminating any left turns coming off of Center Street and any left turns going southbound, turning to the east. From six onto Center Street, which would definitely improve traffic operations at the intersection. So the next one is a similar concept, but making it what we call a three-quarter access. So when we looked, did our initial analysis, it was the southbound left that had the most delay. So, naturally take away the southbound left, so the movement coming from six hundred west onto Center Street. So, that was the worst movement, take that away and look at that, you got better traffic flow.
When you say, when you say better traffic flow, can you explain that for me?
Um, yeah, so.
I mean, it's not like we're rece, we're, there's, we're backing up traffic there. And just for the record, my car was totaled in that intersection. So, I've got a dog in this fight.
Okay.
So, but I, but I wanna, I, I.
I have hours of my time.
But, um, when, when you say impeding traffic, I don't, I don't see it, there's not, there's never a backup there.
Uh, yeah, that, so I mean, that, that just has the longest delay of, of all.
Longer delay to turn left?
To turn left, yes, so southbound, see if I can draw, do you have a laser, oh, laser pointer. We've had this the whole time, okay, I love it.
Let me add in something real quick. So, so how this functions also affects State Street and the left turn off State Street. It's all interconnected and that's why it's a, a, a solution that has UDOT involved and MAG wants to fix it up. But, if, if, if we come and, and we back up left-hand turns here, or impede traffic coming off of State Street. That's where it, it ties all together in that, that timing, so.
Wait Neil, are you, are you saying, are you saying coming in here and turning here?
Yeah, coming off of State Street onto Center Street. And if we back up left-hand turn lanes moving onto six west, and the way that that signal timing works, it creates congestion on State Street.
You mean if you come down here, go here and then turn left?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's where he says, well, it improves traffic flow.
But it doesn't really matter if they come north or come south or come east or come north. If they're coming east on this and wanna decide to turn on six hundred west.
It does because of the timing of the signal itself. That timing of.
Timing of this signal turning left.
Of the whole, of the whole operation, east-west, north-south, all of it can be affected by what we do here.
And, and yeah, again, yeah, State Street does play a, a big role with that and there's, you kinda get those platoons, right? So you get this queuing here, once, you know, once this traffic flows out, then now we have to have the time for these to go left. So the southbound left will see the most, uh, the most delay. Go to the next one. Okay, so the next one is to, to, to put in a signal, uh, this, this type of signal would be called a high-T intersection. I don't know if you've heard that phrase before, but with it being so close to, to State Street, there'd be a lot of coordination with that signal. But what essentially what a high-T would do is it, it's built so that this Center Street traffic is not stopped, right? So we're not gonna have any issues, you know, queuing back into State Street with the through traffic. And then you would have signalized for this left turn movement and then for the southbound left turn movement, to make that movement. So that would be.
I like that one.
An option there.
So you could turn, so, just so I'm, this would not back up, cause this has a, a, a through, a through fro, through, through?
Through.
Through lanes, two lanes.
What's that word? No, it's not, none of those are the words that come to mind, but, that's alright. So.
A free throw, a free throw.
You're all wrong.
Free flow, free flow maybe?
So this would come down, you could still make a left-hand turn, you could still make a right-hand turn, this would be a gate here that they would have to merge.
Yep.
Almost like what's up by Purple Turtle in a way.
Yes, yeah, there we go, that's a great example.
This is the best option.
And, the, the one thing with that, if you look at, you, you do impact the, you know, the access here at the gas station, right? So you're, you're essentially putting a median here, so there is some, but of course, there is some.
People are only cut, cutting through there anyway.
Yeah, they're just, they're just avoiding the intersection anyways, right?
That's pretty bad anyway, it needs a median.
And right here, you're right, thanks Neil. Yeah, and there's also this, cause this now becomes a merge lane, so this would also become right and right out to this complex next to the gas station here. With that one.
What option is that one, just so that we can kinda keep track of it?
So this is a high-T intersection, so maintaining full, all the, all the movements at the intersection there.
Okay.
And so the next one is very, is similar, other than we're, we're still looking at removing that, that southbound left movement. And that allows for some of this access to remain in place. And so that's, that's just a look at that, how that looks.
Maybe that's a question for our chief, how many accidents do we have, I'm just curious, how many accidents we have there?
We probably have to look it up, I'm guessing you don't know that off the top of your head.
Look at, look at August. Morgan totaled my Honda.
Oh, that's right. We should try and take a left? Yeah.
And she was trying to take a left?
And so that's an option there. So the next one, now we're gonna start moving into some of the bigger, kinda the bigger ideas here. Uh, one, one issue that, you know, we're looking at with this intersection, as Neil said in his introduction, is that it is really close to State Street. And so by moving the access further away from State Street allows for, uh, uh, longer, longer turn pockets, uh, more space for those vehicles to, to get out of the through, the through traffic. And so this would be realigning six hundred west as far to the east as possible, uh, and then putting in that high-T intersection. So again, that does incorporate taking land, so this is why it starts getting into the bigger, uh, bigger picture there. But it allows for more, uh, and, and this would be, you could coordinate with UDOT and see how much left turn pocket space do they need at State Street? And how much turn, left turn pocket space do we need for six hundred west and make adequate space at both intersections. And so there's an option there, and then.
Urban renewal.
Yes.
And then, uh, as we started thinking about, um, some of the other things, the other constraint was the railroad. And at this point, it's kind of up in the air exactly what's gonna happen with the railroad. We don't know what is gonna happen there, but if there's any potential way to, to move that existing line, whether that's future tracks or whatever happens, right? Then you could, you could do, um, kinda some realignment of Center Street. Move that, move that up a little bit to the north and create a, uh, the, the thoroughfare from Pleasant Grove Boulevard goes onto six west. And then you can make the turn onto Center Street, add a signal there.
Expensive option, but probably the best option.
Expensive option, and, and in the, and in the current, we're working. Expensive option, and, and in the, and in the current, we're working on the master plan, but in the currently adopted master plan, it shows something like this. Kind of in the original plan.
We've talked about this very thing probably fifteen years ago.
Yes, I remember.
Yep, and, and alter, and the cost at the time, I think it was about ten million dollars, and so we declined and kind of kept it as is, so we're back, here we are.
Yep, here we are. But anyway, so this one option, another one is looking at, how do we help maintain access to, to what's currently here? So, the Center Street traffic would come through this way, right? And then if you're going to Sixth West, you would take that single lane up to Sixth West. And then all the traffic on Center Street would, would go to this intersection up here. Again, just looking at any potential option that we could do. They are, this is why I'm saying this kind of where we get around, I get to get creative, right, you know?
Yeah, the price tag goes.
As a local, as a local citizen or, you know, resident of Pleasant Grove, what do I want to see, right? Is that what hap- no, I'm just kidding. But, so another option then would be to, again, move and, and make a, a, a full intersection. But then also take Garden Drive and realign that to connect there to make a full intersection. There, so again, yeah, we're, we're kind of building up here. And then we decided, let's see, one more, this is a similar idea, where just looking at that Center Street. Taking traffic away maybe from this short intersection and kind of bypassing that to stay on the original alignment of Center Street. So, similar idea with Garden Drive. But then we decided, why don't we add roundabouts into the mix, just because those are always fun? So, looking at a similar option, but putting a roundabout in there, right? And so, looking at putting a roundabout at that, at that intersection. And then lastly, I don't know how many of you have been up, seen that roundabout up at the University of Utah by the stadium where the tracks go through it. But similar idea where we build a roundabout with the tracks going through it. I know this, this would be very big. This one, there'd be a lot more analysis and geometric design needed to determine if that one were actually feasible or not. I know with, with, with the building here, it makes it really tight. But again, putting, just putting the roundabout at the existing location, there'd be a lot of hoops to jump through on that, but that is something that we could look at.
Go back to the previous roundabout for me.
Any thoughts on it? Again, this is again, looking at, we kind of drew in our realignment of the tracks line too, or train tracks too, so it's. It's a, it's a fun problem trying to solve, so this is. So, as, so these were all the concepts, and so there were four, and I'll go back to the top. The four that, when we worked with Neil and the other staff, was to look at. One was just closing the road, because that's definitely a very, a very inexpensive option. I know there's, there's more than just having better, you know, traffic and level of service at the intersection that's involved there. That was the, the first option to look at. And the second one, I should have put these in a different order, I guess. And the second one was this intersection that, that the high-T intersection. Looking at kind of that high-level cost estimate somewhere between four hundred and fifty and six hundred thousand dollars, keeping it on that alignment. The third one was to realign. To realign and, and put that signal further to the east on Center Street. That was the third one, then the last one was that round.
So, that's one point five, one point eight, is that also acquiring that property?
Yeah. So, you'll see the cost estimate of putting in the signal, and then we added a separate item for right away, just so you can kind of see. So, we're kind of looking at impacting, because you'd be buying those properties.
You'd also create a, a pretty desirable piece of property there, that you could sell back the remnant piece, because we've already got a road there. So, you're gonna just take the building out and that, and then create an even larger piece that could be joined up with the west or even just remain.
Okay, and then the last one that we had kind of decided with staff that would be maybe good to continue to investigate would be this potential roundabout idea. And just see if the geometrics work, if it's something that we could move forward with. But of course, we want to get your opinions and your thoughts on those, those four, or I guess on all of the, the rest of those. So, Neil, do you have any other thoughts before we?
Yeah, so, a, a pretty big constraint is this width right here. Between this recently constructed building, they're looking at putting a, a, a trail right here. You can see this actually clips that with this cross-section. And as we've kind of alluded to in, in Traffic 101, is eliminating this left turn eliminates a significant conflict. And when these people are turning left, these people can't turn left. And if, if we can help that situation, it helps the overall functionality of this operate. And, and really, this whole area, including this signal, as I mentioned before, is, is one giant transportation algorithm that we're looking to, to help resolve, not just today's, but in the future. And we're using future volumes to look at that. So, that's why the cul-de-sac option would not happen unless we connected that road all the way over to thirteen. I mean, that would have to happen, because we wouldn't have an alternative way. So, we just thought we wanted to look at that, see what those volumes look like, see how that would look like. We're not, we're not just trying to look at the next five or ten years, we want to look to twenty fifty and look at those volumes. But now we're, we want to ask you guys what you think.
So, I mean, before that, if the council wants to get copies of this and kind of think through it. I, I'm assuming we don't want to take two minutes and make a decision, or maybe you do tonight?
I, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, give you a little time to kind of review that. So, I don't know if this is hard copy or electronic copy we can send to the council.
Yeah, we can send you an electronic copy or get you a hard copy.
I'd like to hear what you're recommending, I mean, you have all these options, like what's your top?
Yeah.
So, so we're recommending to move forward in it with a further analysis and further geometric design and modeling of up to four. The simpler solution, you can go to the high-T. The high-T intersection, it's a lot like the Purple Turtle, is within the existing boundaries of, of what we have today. This doesn't move the rail, it, it protects that left turn. It does impact these people down here, they, they currently have access to turn left out of their sight, but this would prevent that.
Yeah, but that's what causes a lot of the accidents, people trying to shoot out.
Yeah, absolutely, left turns are, you know, statistically, the, the bad guy in terms of accidents.
Will that negatively affect their business?
It, it, it would, I don't know, I haven't done traffic counts to know how many people are.
Could we do that?
Scooping across there, as far as accessing the business, we probably have data for the intersections, but we have what the news coming to get their, their.
Well, that'd be part of the further analysis you're talking about, right?
And we have done some initial counts, and we can look and see if we've got all of, it's hard, because we looked at, but there's, you know, well, there's one giant access, and there's a couple small ones. So, I don't know if we captured some of those smaller, but we can get that.
Yeah, and as, as a city grows, and, and UDOT is not gonna allow this big giant, air-free-for-all, Wild West entrance to this in their plans moving forward either. And that's what we've got here, and, and you'll notice as we move forward.
I mean, that actually sounds kind of fun.
The a- access management's also a big key part in, in managing and moving traffic, so that you, you avoid those delays and those potential conflict points. So, I think if we, if we give you these, these, these fourteen concepts and, and let you think about it. But our, our, our request is to move forward with that, look at, you've seen those little fancy models where the cars move and it's a cartoon. And, and move forward with how that's gonna work, that's what we recommend, we can't do that with all fourteen.
I mean, personally, I would just rather have, you guys are the experts in this, I'd rather have you take the options, the four options, analyze it. I, I can look at this, but I'm not the expert, I don't do this every day. So, I would like to hear your recommendations, I don't even know if, feel like I need time to review it, I, I don't even know necessarily what I would be.
Those are our four recommendations that staff has.
I'm good with you moving forward.
The T, the.
So, yeah, so this one, the, the cul-de-sac with extending the road, and then the, the roundabout.
The mega roundabout and relocating the.
Take the cul-de-sac off.
I like.
It's just the three.
Oh, yeah, take it off, cul-de-sac gone.
Because you're, you're looking at the future home, I don't know how it's going.
Tabitha's Way, and you can't, you can't just stop that.
You're killing it.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Well.
Water gardens you're, you're killing.
If you could connect that road up through, you'd actually.
I think that blesses.
Yeah, how, how does our discussions go with the railroad usually?
It was, it was in, in Neil's answer when he said if.
They never cooperate.
Well, there's, there's even more to consider, if, if Trax decides to put two lanes through here, that, that's another decision that.
When would we know that?
Be challenging, I don't know that we'll know that.
I don't think that's ever gonna happen, the way they talk.
Well, the, the, they're looking at putting in bus rapid transit, that corridor would be changed to Trax in the future. Which would be going down North County Boulevard and not State Street through our city.
So, that may be abandoned.
That, that's the intention, but again, that's probably at least twenty years out. And a lot can happen in twenty years before a final decision's made on that.
I guess I, I can add to you, so far, we've coordinated with UDOT, they've provided us what the, you know, what the future project looks like on State Street to help us with our analysis. And then we've been working on, they're, they're figuring out where to put the rail trail. And so, we've got at least the latest and greatest of where they want to put that trail. I don't know how far they are in their process, but it was on that north side, and that's why we show it there.
It's this, this, this dashed.
Yeah.
Trail line there.
And so, we'll.
Just get rid of the railroad and put the rail trail there. That's a good trade-off.
Yeah, thumbs up. So, we'll take the three then, that's, that's, that's.
I won't live long enough to see it, but I.
I mean, for me.
Okay.
Alright, here's one.
One is?
High-T intersection.
Okay.
Okay. Two, relocate this road over to here. The, the death of operations in a road is proximity to other major roads. So, moving that signal over to here gives you opportunities to do things in this area, that's why we recommended that. This also has a remnant piece of property that's still valuable, so you buy this all out, you can still sell that back, or put an amphitheater there.
Expensive option.
Well, I'm just giving you options.
For everybody here.
So, that's two, and then three is this mega roundabout. Proof of concept would be what Kevin has mentioned up at the U, there is a, a trail, a rail line that goes right through it. This makes it tight for that trail corridor right there.
Well, can you do it without, without, can you position it so that it's not taking out that building?
Well, that's what the next steps would be, would be to really refine this design.
Let's call this option seven A.
So, one, two, and seven A.
Seven A.
He doesn't know what you're talking about.
I guess I don't either, I don't hear about that.
So, so that's what we thought, th- this is actually a really good concept, it moves traffic, it continually moves them. You'd need to put a couple of stop bars clear back here when the train comes through, and, 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 and you'd need to stop them probably clear back here coming down. That's not very often, but this would move traffic off of State Street and keep things going. It's an expensive option, but we thought it was worth exploring for the long-term success of this intersection.
I'd probably be more interested in this one if it, if it, if we weren't compromising that one building that, that was just built.
Right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's where we need to take the, the next step to see if indeed that would be the case.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take those three concepts and.
Get that out to us, and we'll study a little bit more, thank you.
And for those of you that don't know, this is Kevin, he's actually the, one of the best golfers at HROX.
Well, thank you.
He's, he's incognito.
So, you say, you, we want to have him on our team next time? Okay.
I'm always willing to play on you too.
He is the HROX-designated golfer.
Well, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Well, we've burned up all of our time, so I asked for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion to adjourn.
What's that?
And I'll second it.
Motion to adjourn, one to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're.